My clock, my calendar still works from September to June. I guess many of us still have that calendar. Before we get going, I'd like to say on behalf of the committee, thanks to Joe Loda, who was the chair before I took the seat. He served this university well for almost 15 years. His shoes will be big to fill, but I'll do my best. Before proceeding with the agenda of today's meeting, I'd like to welcome and introduce who I think is coming, and I'll wait to introduce her, Una Clark. Is she coming today?
Yes.
And also a welcome to our student representative for this meeting, Cecilia Salvi. She's currently enrolled at the Graduate Center, is that correct?
Yes.
We'll now turn to the agenda and the action items. Number one is the approval of the minutes of June 1st, 2015. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Otherwise, I'll move their approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Go to Agenda Item Number Two, which gets us to our policy calendar. Item One on the policy calendar is a resolution requesting approval of a schedule of academic excellence fees for students in certain graduate programs in the School of Education at Hunter effective with the spring of 2016. The programs and the requested fees are included in the resolution. The academic excellence fees will help provide the quality of support for these very clinically rich programs and necessary at Hunter. The college, in response to questions that I pose, advises that the additional cost for a student earning a degree in the initial teacher certification program is $2,000, and for the counselor's degree, counseling degree, would be a total of $3,000. And the college anticipates revenue to the tune of $1.4 million a year. Questions or comments from the committee? And President Rab is here to respond if any questions are directed to her. Hearing none, I will move -- yes, sorry, Cecilia.
Have there been any other sources of income explored other than raising tuition essentially or passing it on to the students?
President Rab, did you hear that question?
Very fair question. We've actually raised a fair amount of money for the School of Education over the last 10 years and have, as our former provost knows, the first named endowed chair in the School of Ed. So we're very mindful of that. The magnitude of what we're doing in the School of Education with the new programs and keeping up with the new teacher training requirements really led us to believe that it was the most really effective way to raise the money necessary for these particular programs. These are teachers who have not been previously certified, so they are getting all of their clinical training and their certification and their master's degrees, so it's extremely faculty-intensive. They have to do the EDTIPa, the new program for learning how to teach and be assessed on video. So just for all of those reasons, we felt that our enrollment was strong, the programs were very attractive, the faculty that we are training are being placed and employed, and that it was the equitable and effective way to do this, and the money will go right back into those programs. And for that reason, we had the understanding and support of the faculty and the students, obviously with the caveat that people would prefer not to pay more fees, but the understanding is that it was really going into the new standards, the new requirements for training teachers.
Any other questions or comments? Terry?
This is the education program at Hunter is our strongest education program by far. Excellent program. To maintain excellence, you must have resources. There should be some place at CUNY where strong students can go to be well-trained. It seems like a fair trade-off to me. I would ask sometime over time, we've approved a number of these academic excellence fees. I've been supportive of each one, and in each case, we've said they're going to be targeted to improve the program that they are associated with. Sooner or later, I think, an audit of that, or at least, I don't mean an audit like $35,216, but a general sense of where the money is going to make sure that we are in fact fulfilling our obligation to the students.
Chancellor, that sounds like a reasonable request to make. Can we ask you to provide that information?
Absolutely right, that we should make a periodic report over an ample period of time to demonstrate what we've done with the funds.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll move the approval of Action Item Number One on our policy calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Jennifer, congratulations on the Grove gift.
Thank you so much.
That must be one of the largest single gifts you've gotten.
It's a, and one of the more emotional ones. It was really exciting to see the daughters honor their mother, and she was very surprised. It was really lovely. Thank you.
Oh, that's great.
We can now move to Action Item Number Two on the policy calendar, which is a resolution requesting certain fees for students at the Graduate School of Journalism. The non-refundable application fee of $125 and the non-refundable commitment deposit for accepted students are consistent with similar fees and the same rates at CUNY-wide. The funds for the increase in the fee of the January Academy will provide critical support to enable that program to maintain its high level of services and professionalism. It's not a lot of money, but it's meaningful to the School of Journalism. These increases will raise an additional $31,000 annually. The Director of Academic Operations, Amy Durkin, is here with us to respond to any questions or concerns of the committee. Are there any questions or concerns? Any comments from any committee member? Hearing none, I'll move the approval of Action Item Number Two on the policy calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposition. Thank you. Carries. Item Number Three on our policy calendar is a resolution requesting the General Counsel to execute agreements on behalf of Lehman College with Eon Reality, Inc., to allow Lehman College and Eon to move forward with a virtual reality training program. What was the second? I had a discussion with Matt and raised a number of questions which he posed to the college, and Dr. Ricardo Fernandez is here with us. Their written response was provided, which was circulated to all committee members this morning, so you have that. And I asked President Fernandez if he would take a minute and present this very exciting program to us and respond to any questions or concerns that committee members may have. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to just share a few thoughts about this proposed project. The goal is to develop a hub for the ITech industry in the Bronx specializing in virtual reality and augmented reality. This is one of the newest areas in IT that is developing very rapidly because it has multiple applications in industry, entertainment, and education. Technology is one of the fastest-growing fields in New York City. The Bronx, however, has not participated in this tech boom. But the three colleges of CUNY working together are proposing to reverse this trend by establishing this Bronx ITech Hub as part of an initiative that we are very much in support of. We see great potential in offering our students the opportunity to become acquainted and to use the latest technologies by being taught by professionals in coding specializing in VR and AR. It will also allow them to put to use the knowledge and the skills they acquire by working on real projects as part of teams, earning a salary while they acquire the experience needed to then go on to work in a growing field in the IT industry. This is available, this will be available to CUNY students, two-year students, four-year schools, graduate students. They will be equipped with skills and knowledge connected to jobs, current and future. I think the, another benefit, I think, potentially is that this hub will enable faculty in computer science and in other fields, related fields, to learn about the needs of employers in this area and IT-related industries. And this will enable them to adapt the curriculum of current courses and study and majors so that they will make it, they will make them more relevant to the rapidly evolving workforce nationally and indeed worldwide. This is a private-public partnership with Eon Reality, which is a California-based, privately-held IT company that has been involved in this field of virtual reality and augmented reality development, and they have projects involved involving many countries around the world. They have a hub in Manchester, England, that is an example of how this company has partnered with a number of entities, including, in this case, the city of Manchester itself. I think VR and AR has incredible potential for teaching and learning at all levels, not just K-12 and college, but beyond that. One of the things that I learned in becoming more familiar with this field is that some of the research on learning shows that information learned by students via this medium is retained better and longer, and that students actually test better when they have learned through this. I think this would be revolutionary in some ways. In some ways, it's very difficult to imagine what this technology is going to eventually evolve into. But I think this is exciting for us to, at the City University, being committed to not just the borough of the Bronx, but the city in the creation of new jobs in a whole range of fields. So I appreciate the opportunity to share some of these thoughts with you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments by the committee?
So Ricardo, did I understand you to say that the students who are involved in this program can come from any campus?
Yes.
And is that, is that also going to be true of internship opportunities?
Yes.
Well, I'm very enthusiastic. I think this is a very promising project.
There's no limit. The agreement calls for Eon to take three students on a permanent basis. There's nothing in the contract that would preclude other firms from soliciting these students. There's no impediments that you, you know?
No. We expect to train between 30 and 60 students, and this training will take intensive, there will be an intensive period of about three months, and then followed by nine months in which they will be paid to work on actual projects that are in the works. The company doesn't have enough people trained to actually carry out this work. So this is learning on the job.
I share the enthusiasm of Chairman Schmidt for this program, both in the point of view of enhancement to teaching and learning, and also the opportunity it's going to give to the students who are engaged with Eon Virtual Reality in terms of career. Valerie, any questions?
Yeah. I'm always excited about these economic development initiatives, and I would just encourage us, I think there was another one that Bronx Community College is also considering, that we have annual reports that tell us exactly how many CUNY students are actually benefiting and who are getting jobs. I have seen these in other states where the initial population that was supposed to benefit from it did not necessarily benefit from it. So while I'm excited about everybody in New York getting jobs, I think our engagement is to make sure that our students are afforded these opportunities. So I would just encourage an annual report on just how that is going and who actually is getting, who are getting the jobs and the training and et cetera. And if they're having, what I've heard in other instances is that, well, those students weren't prepared, or, you know, we had to look elsewhere because those students didn't have the skill set. Well, let's acknowledge who our students are and make sure that the program addresses their specific needs and that we don't wind up having to go, quote, "elsewhere" to fulfill those, those things. So I'd just like to have feedback on that they follow through on that commitment to help this particular population.
Thank you, Trustee Bianca. Can we call upon you to do that for us, President Fernandez? Can we call upon you to give us that annual report around this time next year?
Absolutely. Be pleased to do that.
Great, thank you.
I think--
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll move the adoption of this resolution, Action Item Number Three. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries. Before we go to the information items, let me just say, since I see she's walked in, let me welcome the Honorable Dr. Una Clark, newly appointed to the CUNY Board by our mayor and a new member of this committee, and we're delighted to have you with us. We'll now turn to the information items, and Item One is the Community and Senior College allocations. I think we're going to hear from Vice Chancellor Sapiels.
Thanks, Chair Schwartz. And Chair Schwartz, we look forward to continuing to work with you in your new role as chair, so congratulations on your appointment, and welcome also to Trustee Clark, our student representative Cecilia Salvi, and also want to welcome our new Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Vida Rabinowitz. So welcome, Vida. So we wanted to update you on what's been happening over the last several months since our last meeting in June, and the biggest item that we wanted to make sure you're aware about is the allocation of resources to the senior colleges and the community colleges, which took place over the summer. So I'll talk about the senior colleges first. Senior colleges, as we reported several months ago, had an increase to their budget of about $78 million when you compare year to year, from fiscal '16 to fiscal '15. However, about $61 million of that was generated from additional tuition dollars from the fall 2015 increase of $300. And about $12 million of that amount was for performance incentive funding, a new initiative that the governor put into the budget that was approved by the legislature, and it's going to be our next information item. Vida and I will be presenting that to you in just a moment, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. There were some other increases for programs like SEEK and CUNY Leeds and for the Murphy Institute, but overall, it was a $78 million increase. However, the $61 million in tuition, not all of that is available to us because some of those funds have to be used to cover the difference between our tuition rate and the top maximum award. But also, we have asked our colleges to set aside those dollars in anticipation of potential collective bargaining increase. So those dollars are not available for new initiatives at our campuses or to fund any budget shortfalls because they're needed to be reserved for collective bargaining increases. In addition, I think as you, as most of you know, the state budget did not include any funding for mandatory cost increases, things like fringe benefits, energy costs, building rentals, and the like, and those told $51 million. And because of this $51 million mandatory cost shortfall, it was necessary for us to do a budget reallocation this year when we allocated the funds to our senior colleges. And so all of our senior colleges are taking a 3% budget reallocation so that funds are being transferred from the college budgets in order to fund these mandatory cost increases. It's 3% across the board to all of the, each of the senior colleges. We're also targeting reductions at twice the amount of the senior college reductions at four centrally managed accounts, the system office and other centrally managed accounts. And so the funds that are being redirected from the colleges are about $38 million, and the rest will be backfilled from the centrally managed accounts. So our colleges are working on their financial plans and determining how those funds are going to be managed and what adjustments they need to make to their financial plans going forward. So that's the senior college side. Community college side, much better situation for our, for our community colleges. Our community colleges total year to year have about $49.5 million in additional resources in fiscal '16 than they had in fiscal '15, and that's about a 5.8% increase. About $6 million of that is coming from additional state aid that was, that was included in the state enacted budget this year. $24 million is coming from the $300 tuition increase that was effective this past fall, and $16 million is coming from the City of New York and the amounts that were included in the city adopted budget for this year. And that $16 million is going for a host of things, but mostly for the mayor's STEM initiative, increasing the ASAP initiative, which I know you all know has been very successful, CUNY Start expansion for math remediation. So those dollars are being targeted for those, for those items. The $24 million in additional tuition revenue is all going back to the community colleges for a compact investment plan. And so it's the fifth year in a row that we've had additional tuition dollars for the community colleges. It's all going for new investments in, at our community colleges. Colleges have flexibility in how they want to use those dollars, and they'll report back to us as part of their financial planning process how those dollars are going to be used. We always require that the colleges in developing compact plans do so in consultation with the elected student and faculty leaders. And so all of that entire $24 million is going to be used for new investments on our campuses, and so we're excited about that. The other thing I want to mention, and again, we'll talk about it in just a minute, is we're setting aside $6 million from the total community college allocation for the performance improvement funds, which I know we're going to talk about in just a minute. So our community colleges in a much, much better position fiscally than our senior colleges at this point. Senior colleges, each of them are in different situations. Some of them will be able to manage the 3% reallocation much better than others, but we'll continue to work with the colleges throughout the year and make sure that we all end up in a strong place by the end of the fiscal year. So happy to take any questions or any concerns that anyone may have.
Matt, what will be roughly the expanded scope of ASAP across all of our community colleges, or at least the ones who are doing some ASAP programs? And I should just say for Trustee Clark, ASAP is our effort to drastically improve the graduation rate out of community colleges, and it's a, it's a variety of student support services, certain curricular focus efforts, and it has had the effect of almost tripling the graduation rate. But it requires a greater investment in the students before they graduate. Actually, on a per-graduated student basis, since so many more of them graduate, the investment is actually less to get a graduated student, but it's quite a bit more in terms of what it costs CUNY while the students are receiving all these additional services.
The mayor, in his executive budget, and in the final adopted budget, I should say, included a total increase of $42 million to the university, which was really an historic add to the university's budget in any one year. And that $42 million is spread out over four years, and the bulk of it is going for the ASAP expansion, as you mentioned, Chair Schmidt. And that's going to be able to fund a really aggressive expansion of ASAP, and it's going to be able to get us to 25,000 students in ASAP by fall 2018. Last year, we had about, I think it was about 7,300 students in the total program. We're ramping up to, I believe, about 13,000 this year. So this year, we have, you know, an aggressive increase, but that'll ramp up to about 25,000 students in fall 2018. So we're really excited about it and really grateful to the mayor and the city council for their continued support of these initiatives.
Well, it's just, I'm very gratified to hear that because I think it's, ASAP is one of the most successful academic reform efforts that have been made since I've been on this board, and if we can keep expanding that success to embrace more and more community college students, it is a huge improvement in CUNY's overall productivity in terms of graduation rates. So I think that's great, and I'm, I second what you said about, we owe the mayor a lot of thanks for his recognition that this program is so successful and is worth expanding rapidly.
Professor Martel?
Did any of the senior colleges fail to meet their enrollment goals?
The enrollment overall for fall 2015 is up for the university, which is, which is a good thing. At the, at all of the colleges, both senior colleges and community colleges, there's a mixed bag in terms of some are, some are up, some are up significantly, and some are down. And so some colleges did fall short of their enrollment goals, but, but not many. And I think one of the really encouraging things about this fall's enrollment, not only are we up overall and we're at the highest enrollment we've been at the university's history, but graduate enrollment, which has been down the last several years, is up for this fall. So we're really encouraged about that for the colleges that have graduate programs, those are up. So the enrollment, definitely a good story for this fall.
But it's going to be a real challenge for someone that fails to meet their enrollment goals to take a 3% hit?
Yes. Those colleges that, that are falling short of their enrollment targets, yes, it'll be, it'll be more of a challenge.
Who is the, who's, which campus has fell, fell far this short?
At the senior colleges--
We're short by 300 students. I don't know if we're the most, but--
Right.
It's 400 more than we had last year, but the target was more than last year. So we have more than last four were, a little less that count today.
John Jay College is down, but they were projected to be, to be, to be down. College Southern Island is down. And on the community college side, I know Kingsborough was showing a decline as well, but we'll make sure that the numbers, when they're official, get out to all of you.
Are they down from the previous year, or are they under what?
The target.
The target.
A little of both. I mean, some are down from the previous year, but some, as, as this case with John Jay, John Jay wasn't expecting to grow. So their decline wasn't necessarily against their plan, it was just from year to year. And many colleges are up over what they were projecting as well, and so that's a good thing.
Well, I don't consider the Queens is down. I mean, to me, down or up is compared to last year. And now your target may be even more--
Yeah, I think you should differentiate those that might make--
That's a different, the target is different. But to get a true picture of enrollment trends, actual enrollment, to me, is much more important than where you are vis-à-vis some target.
You're absolutely right, but the reality is if you, if you miss a target, they take that off your operating budget--
Yeah.
And if you take a 3% hit on top of that--
I understand the budgetary--
You're sucking eggs.
Yeah.
Cecilia?
Do you expect that the 3% that senior colleges are being asked to relocate will be enough to get us through the year, and do you have any kind of long-term projections for what might happen next year or in five years?
We certainly think that it'll be enough to get us through this year. We think that the shortfall this year, we're asking our colleges to plan for, that that is a continuing, continuing cut, that it's not just something that we're doing for this year, this 3% is a baseline reduction. And we're certainly hopeful that going forward, our mandatory needs will be funded by the state. Historically, they owe, they had been, and this year, none of our mandatory needs were funded. So we're hoping that that's not a continuing situation, but, but we always want our colleges to make sure that they plan for the worst-case scenario, and so we'll be, we'll be working with the colleges to make sure that, that they're protecting the core mission as much as possible.
And so--
Please.
So then my follow-up question would be, are you expecting any tuition increases? Like, is that even on the table right now?
Well, the-- Well, the, the legislation that the state passed in two thousand and eleven, which enabled CUNY and SUNY to raise tuition by three hundred dollars a year for five years, that legislation expires in June 2016. And so, going forward, there's no authorization from the state or appropriation of dollars for additional tuition increases at this point. However, the law is expiring, and, and there could be an extension, or there could be a new law put in. But at this point, there's no authorization for that. But that doesn't mean things couldn't change before next fall semester, fall 2016. But at this point, a change needs to be made to the law that's expiring in order to do so.
I have to step out. That three percent doesn't include any adjustment for any type of faculty raises, does it?
Correct, it does not.
So, it is a cut, absent any discussion or funding of faculty raises? And when's the last time faculty received raises?
The, the contract expired in 2010, and the last increase was effective in twenty, in October of two thousand and nine. And you might have missed this trustee bill before you walked in, but we, we are requiring of the colleges, senior colleges, four-year colleges, that, that the additional tuition revenue this year is set aside in reserve so that they'll have resources to, to cover any potential collective bargaining increases.
Where is the mandatory contribution legislation that the legislature passed? Did they send that to the governor?
No. Jenny? As of, as of today, no.
Is it just sitting around up there? They ever going to send it to the governor?
Well, the, the way it works is the, the governor has not requested it yet, and the Assembly, which is the point of origin for the maintenance of effort legislation, has not sent it up.
But if that were, if, if that were approved by the governor, would that cover some collective bargaining costs?
No, it's going forward.
It's going forward.
For CUNY and SUNY.
So, we're still kind of, without wherewithal to deal with collective bargaining?
It, it, it's an issue that we've, we've talked about as a board, it's been talked about this committee, and certainly, it's, it's one the chancellor has spoken of since he arrived on campus, need to have a contract for our faculty. Any, yes?
Just a quick question for Matt. Matt, going back to SUNY, our first year of our contract overlaps with the last year of their contract. It's the only year they got the raise that they got. If we were to get just that retroactively, what kind of number is that? We must have done that calculation. How unrealistic is that?
Yeah.
How much?
Right.
It's fifteen percent.
It's, it's a little over three hundred million dollars for all unions.
Any other questions for Vice Chancellor Sapienza?
I, I, I just want to say one thing to follow up on the chairman's comment, and that is that we are working, my colleagues and I here, every day on, with the leadership of the city and with the, and the state, on finding resolution to this, which includes some level of funding that will allow us to address this as well, ultimately, as approval of, of the pattern that we propose.
Trustee Clark?
Yeah, I was, if we are taking some reduction of three percent already on the campuses of the senior colleges, that's enough to give some of the colleges a warning. Now, if we have outstanding contracts, what is the, well, I would imagine our responsibility as trustees is to make sure that staff teach, that professors teach, and the rest of the staff do their work, that they should not feel that we are not caring. So, whatever the united effort has to be to make sure whether it's the state and the city together, help us in showing good faith to the staff, that we go ahead and do that. And I think if you come up with a strategy, we should be able to at least convince them that this is good policy. We care about the people who care for our students, and if they care for our students, we should make an effort to show them our effort, and so, we can come from meeting after meeting and try to figure out without a strategy how we approach it.
Any other questions for Vice Chancellor Sapienza? If not, we can move on to the second item on our information calendar, which is the proposed framework for the performance improvement plan for CUNY. I understand we're to have a preview of this from the chancellor, from Vice Chancellor Sapienza, and also from our new provost, Vida Rubinowitz.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I want to say, as all of you know, I think this is an initiative that came from the governor in the last legislative session to provide for performance funding for both CUNY and SUNY. As Matt mentioned earlier, twelve million for CUNY, but we, and that's for the senior colleges. But I'm, I am pleased we've come up with a strategy to increase that amount, to provide for the community colleges to participate as well in this. You'll see from the presentation that the six areas identified for investment are all areas that are central to our business. I believe this is an opportunity for us. It's twelve million dollars in new funding, plus additional new funding that we'll use for the community college. And we're going to, we've raised some, we have some private money we're going to put into this as well to increase the impact that we'll be able to have. We met with the presidents today to review this with them, and we'll do that again soon in more detail. I happen to believe this is a, a great opportunity for us to encourage and reward innovation at the campus level in a variety of ways, based on our, our longstanding performance management system, which gives us a little bit of a head start here, based on our priorities, identifying the master plan, based in the future on our strategic plan. I think it gives an opportunity for the board to invest in the priorities that it's set for the university. Now, time is tight. This is one-time funding. In the future, it may be recurring funding. I think if we demonstrate success with this, we have an opportunity to, to be successful with increased funding for this purpose in the future. So, a, a goal of mine is to have a process that is, moves with some alacrity so that we can distribute these funds and get them spent on good purposes across the university. So, today, we're bringing this for information. We want whatever questions, suggestions you have, but it's conceptual. We're going to be moving ahead and refine it before the board meeting on October first, but then, as you'll see, we have a pretty tight schedule for trying to, to push the funds out so that the campuses can take advantage of it. So, I asked the provost and the vice chancellor for budget plans to sort of lead our efforts in developing a plan for this, which they've done and presented today to the presidents, and we'll give you the details.
Okay. Thanks, chancellor. There's a presentation that's, that's in front of you, and, and we have it up on, on the screens there as well. And as the chancellor mentioned, this is a governor initiative, it's included in the governor's executive budget proposal. It was enacted by the legislature in the state adopted budget. There's eighteen million dollars that was appropriated for SUNY and twelve million for CUNY. And you can see the last bullet there on the slide has the actual enacted legislative language, and you can see there that the criteria shall include, but is not limited to improving access, completion, academic and post-graduation success in services, research and, and community engagement. And as the chancellor mentioned, we're going to leverage other sources of funding to increase that twelve million dollar appropriation. So, twelve million dollar appropriation from the state was for the senior colleges, but we would like the community colleges to participate in this initiative as well. And so, as I mentioned earlier, we set aside six million dollars from the community college allocation that will be used for, for those associate degree programs. We've identified a million dollars in external grant funding that we'll include as well, and then a million dollars from, from centrally managed accounts that we're going to throw into the pot as well. And so, the total performance improvement plan is going to be twenty million dollars. And as the chancellor mentioned, we are on an aggressive timeframe here, so we want to roll these dollars out to the campuses as soon as possible so they have enough time to spend it in this fiscal year. The Board of Trustees does have to approve the plan as part of the legislation that was passed by the state. And so, as the chancellor mentioned, we are doing an information item here at the Fiscal Committee. We're also going to be doing it at academic, at the Academic Affairs Committee, which is going to be taking place later this evening, so that we can get your input and then have the full board vote on it on October first. So, in terms of the areas that we're identifying, the priority areas, I'm going to turn it over to, to our provost, Vida Rubinowitz, to go through it. So, Vida, thank you.
Thank you. Greetings, trustees and guests. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. In thinking about how we would allocate this eighteen to twenty million dollars that the governor has allocated and the chancellor has supplemented, we want it to be guided by CUNY's own processes as well as the state's priorities. We mined our own master plan, the, the, the master plan to two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen, but also our performance management process, which has proven so helpful in focusing the entire university on its goals, and also our exciting new strategic framework planning, which will eventuate in our next master plan that we'll be drafting this spring. So, I am pleased to say that we were, as, as an exercise for us, we mapped our, the New York State priorities, and again, they're important, and they're important because the state's priorities are very much CUNY's enduring and emerging priorities. So, increasing access. To give you one sense of how we're doing that, I am leading a task force this year on what I see as one of our main barriers to access, which is mathematics remediation, which has essentially stopped so many students from getting a college education and a college degree. So, access, college completion, completing degrees, making progress toward degrees, student success and postgraduate outcomes. What happens to our students once they take our degrees? Do our degrees have recognized value, and do they provide the skills? Research and inquiry. This refers most obviously to faculty research, both theoretical and applied interdisciplinary, often focused on either the grand challenges of the day, income inequality, health disparities, climate change, but also specifically, CUNY faculty are focused on an urban agenda, and that is a, and that is an enduring commitment of CUNY. Regional engagement with the workforce, with the community, and experiential learning, one of the governor's great priorities, and one of ours as well, recognizes that it's high-impact practices within and beyond the classroom that transform students' lives. So, New York State's priorities, trustees and guests, I, I, this is an exercise to show that in every case, they map on to CUNY's performance management goals, with one glaring exception, faculty satisfaction. That is not a, the governor's priority, but it is CUNY's. So, we, we can move on from that slide. Some of our exciting initiatives emerging from the strategic framework map particularly well onto the state's priorities. For example, the chancellor's passion, and, and it's widely shared, to expand online education improves access, completion, and student success. Similarly, strengthening a global perspective and global practice improves access, but also increases student success and provides new opportunities for research collaborations. So, so moving on, what are the next steps? The spirit of the, of the governor's plan and the state budget is to incentivize best practices, to invite exciting proposals in those six areas. What we're busy doing now is we're developing an RFP process, a request for proposals. We're inviting proposals in the six state areas that also match CUNY's priorities. This RFP will specify the requirements for proposals, including eligibility criteria and evaluation criteria. We will present measurable goals and milestones, because remember, this is performance funding. This money has to work. We will include example initiatives in the agenda. We will identify desirable features of a successful proposal and minimum requirements for a successful proposal. And this is our timeline. Today is September ninth, and this is our second of three presentations today to the Council of Presidents and to two Board of Trustees subcommittees. We are hoping that we can have a resolution ready for approval by the board on October first, its next meeting. We hope on that very day that you will also see and approve our request for proposals, which we will release to the colleges immediately upon approval. The deadline for the request for proposals will be October sixteenth. You see, it's a tight timeline, but we'll be working with the colleges. And by the way, we're going to encourage the colleges to work with each other, to issue joint proposals, and also to work with industry, community groups. We're encouraging partnerships, collaboration, interdisciplinary...
So, you're not going to wait until October first to start working with the colleges?
No, 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 no. Absolute. Chair Schmidt, we are, our call to arms was today, is today, and we're, and we're, we're, and we're working on that RFP a, as we speak. We hope to complete the initial review by October twenty-third, get back to the colleges with requests for changes, modifications, and hope to have the final proposals from the colleges on November sixth, and to present a slate for the board's approval at its November twenty-third meeting. The idea is to get the money out the door, to get the best proposals funded and get the money out the door as soon after November twenty-third as possible, so we can make a difference this year.
So, who, who, who makes the final decision about how the eighteen to twenty million is going to be allocated? Is it, is it the Board of Trustees, or does that go back to Albany?
It is, it is the Board of Trustees. Fortunately, it is not, that's right. It, 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 it stops with the board, and there will be a review committee that will make recommendations to the board, but, and the review committee will be constituted in a way that has integrity.
And which board committee will have the primary responsibility of, of reviewing all this? Fiscal affairs or...
We punted on that today, and we're taking it two committees because these are obviously clear academic priorities, but it also has fiscal implications. So, we're doing the same drill twice this afternoon, at least for information purposes today, and to broaden the number of Board of Trustees who have some input into this.
I just wanted to raise the question about those colleges that may not have the same expertise or support system to answer an RFP. What kind of technical assistance will they get in order that they fulfill the requirement? Because the ones that probably need it the most would probably the ones that would do the lousiest of the proposals. So, I think we have to set up some technical assistance for them to be able to respond to an RFP.
Dr. Clark, if I may, you couldn't be more correct. And that's why, even in this tight timeframe, we left a period to help colleges get where they need to be in their proposals. Now that I have assumed this position and reviewed proposals, I do see that sometimes the proposals themselves are windows into opportunities to make interventions and improve things. So, we will work with, we will work with the colleges, we will, you know, to, to, to fine-tune the proposals in every way, and thank you for mentioning that.
You mean the collaboration of more than one college on a proposal together? Gives a chance to, to... Gives a chance to marry some of the, some of the more sophisticated campuses with some of the ones that may have fewer resources. Professor Martel?
Operating capital?
Operating is all operating dollars. One-time operating.
Thank you.
Professor Conway?
As a community college faculty member, I'm happy to see you including the community colleges, but if I understand it correctly, you're essentially taking part of the allocation that's already going to the community colleges and now just holding them accountable in this kind of process, which is fine, because I think we should all be accountable to our strategic plan. My only concern would be, as part of this process, what if the community colleges don't identify $6 million worth of projects or proposals? Is there any risk that some of this money would shift to senior colleges?
No. The $6 million will all be for community colleges. However, it may not go back to community colleges, dollar for dollar, the individual campuses. It'll depend on the RFP process.
Right. So it could shift from BMCC to Kingsborough, depending on the process?
Correct.
It's $12 million that'll go for senior colleges, $6 for community, and there's $2 million that will be allowed to be applied to the best proposals from throughout CUNY.
So essentially, this, these projects have to be boots-on-the-ground existing projects. I mean, there's no way that you could start something November 23rd and the academic year is over May 23rd. So this, this has to be something that's...
Good question. And there are a number of things that can be done. For instance, release time for faculty for course development, program development, online or regular programs. There are technology purchases that could be made. There are partnerships that could be made between colleges to release faculty to work on transfer, effective transfer, and articulation agreements. I think it's, they're not going to invent something out of whole cloth, and it will clearly be things that are priorities for the colleges already, and that they have been thinking about how they might make investments in this.
The only comment I would offer, and I don't know what you can do with this chancellor, but to follow up on what Dr. Clark said earlier, we share the goal with New York State, the priority, rather, of student success. And it's clear to all of us, and certainly to you, it's on your mind every day, that student success goes hand in hand with faculty satisfaction. And we have to somehow get that message to the people who need to hear it, that the priorities that we share with them are being frustrated by the inability to pay attention to faculty satisfaction.
Got it. Let me give another couple examples.
I'm sure you do.
Well, an internship program, experiential learning is going to be obviously a big priority of ours and others throughout the state. You know, I could imagine a proposal that came for a particular partnership with internships where it's would support that activity. So I think there are probably good ideas for expanding existing programs that exist that meet some of these goals.
And what's the measurement of success? Do we, in the RFP, they say what the measurement is, or what are the criteria for measurement of success?
Trustee Bill, another excellent question. Every proposal will have associated metrics with it. Now, you might ask, related to your earlier question, can we achieve those goals in a short timeframe? We won't even have a full academic year. So we will have benchmarks for success, but every funded proposal will have associated metrics, because again, this is performance funding, and the governor has made it clear that any future monies that may or may not come will be based in part on performance in this. And we want to perform, we want to succeed.
As I said, or intimate, we didn't create this, but it's a great opportunity for us, and we're going to take advantage of it, and we're going to demonstrate success with it, because it's not just New York, but states across the country are increasingly investing in performance funding. And so this will be the first shot for us, and we're getting good at it as we go, and we're going to demonstrate success with this.
Any other questions or comments? Not, thank you very much. Preview?
We would invite additional thoughts, comments from board members on this process, and we'll be back to you, of course, in October, and then later for the...
Any other business for the committee? If not, a move that we adjourn, and thank you all very much.
Here, here.